Six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is public comment. If you have a comment for the board, please come to the podium, state your name and address, or give comments to the board and not to the audience, and you have three minutes. No takers? I'm number three, discretionary preservation barn easement public hearing. So I officially open up the hearing. Jill Noonie and Bob Munger have applied for a barn easement. Anything you'd like to say?
Do you want to present?
Sure.
My name is Bob Munger. I live at the forty-five High Road with my wife Jill Noonie. This one, sorry?
Please.
My name is Bob Munger. I live at the forty-five High Road with my wife Jill Noonie. Ten years ago, we applied for an abatement of our barn that we have. We have a large barn that met the criteria in terms of visibility from the road and age and historic interest, and we were approved at that time. Very little has changed since then. I forgot to add in the current application that we have indeed replaced the roof on the workshop, but other than that, it is unchanged, and we're applying for another abatement.
Any questions?
The votes look like they will take care of us.
I have one question on the application. Under step number two, it says tax year 2017.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It says 2000, under step two in the application, it says tax year 2017. This is not retroactive, is it?
We were, we resubmitted an application in 2017, and the historic district informed us that it wasn't due until 2018.
Yeah, they were just too early.
So...
So it's actually for 2019? Well, it expired in 2018. Okay. So it's, right.
So...
So it's for 2018. They've already received the benefit. It continues.
Okay, so either way, the form needs to be changed?
Yep. Yes.
So can we just tweak it, or...
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
I do.
Ms. Jenkins?
President Jenkins, Heritage Commission. I'm glad you caught that, that there was last, there was a mix-up last year, and when it was, but it is this year. He's supposed to be here with a, with a three null, and the Heritage Commission did discuss it, and we do not have an objection.
Ms. Donald?
Bill Huns, thirty-eight, Burchill Road, speaking as an individual, not as a member of the town commission. When the application was submitted eleven or twelve years ago, I wrote a letter in support in that I live in the neighborhood and have strong feelings in support of the proposal, and I just wanted to recommend that again. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Nope. Anything else for the boardroom?
It's all good.
One of the things I'd like us, if it's possible, in terms of the Heritage Commission discussing this, we'd like to do like, maybe with the next one, site visits, and just check those things out, so hopefully the board would be amenable for us doing that beforehand. So we just, just like we do regular easements, just check that out.
Doing it for all of them, you mean?
Well, as they come up.
As they come up, yeah.
All right. Yep. I move to approve the Noonie-Munger application for discretionary preservation easement on the barn for a ten-year term and a seventy-five reduction, excuse me, reduction in assessed value, and to authorize the town administrator work with the town council on the property order on drafting an easement document. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Are those in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Do you want to hold up on signing this when you sign everything with...
You have any other consent?
Yep.
I have number four, Steve Bullock, Highway Supervisor.
I'm here to ask if we can change our schedule to work four ten-hour days instead of five weeks for the summer. It'll help us on days we have projects and cut down on overtime. I mean, like, the other day, we were cutting shoulders on Cartland and DeMar, and come three o'clock, we had to stop, and it was a nice day, and we could've kept going, but we had to get done by three. We could've finished the entire one side of the Mary and been half-done with it by five or four thirty.
So you're still doing a forty-hour work week, you just...
Yeah, we're still gonna do a forty-hour work week, no matter what. And then Warren and Pete had suggested that if you didn't want us to just work Monday through Thursday, they'd be more than willing to split it. Someone would have Monday off, one would have Friday off, so you'd have coverage still five days a week.
Julie, what are we doing, the transfer station? Is it eight or ten hours?
Well, some employees work twelve-hour days, and then, of course, we don't get a timesheet from the manager, and then the part-timers, less than that, in various shifts.
I worked four-ten's before I came here.
What's your recommendation?
Four-ten's is great when you've got projects and stuff going on, because you've got the time to be able to do them. You're not gonna change a pipe in eight hours, there's gonna be overtime involved.
What's your recommendation?
To work four-ten's. I like 'em, and it's also, it's a reward for the guys, they get a three-day weekend after they've been plowing snow all the way along.
But which one do you, which one do you recommend? Where everybody, for example, has Friday off?
Oh, see, that doesn't, that doesn't matter to me. That's, if you guys want full coverage five days a week, then we'll do it that way. If you don't want full coverage, and then we're just on-call. The only difference is if something happens on a Friday, it's overtime. So if you keep overtime down and keep the mowing schedules correct, splitting it would probably be the best.
Yeah, it's better, from my side, full coverage.
That's fine.
Maybe through Friday. Yeah, I think it's important to have somebody here.
Yeah.
Because sometimes it's minor stuff, breaks falls down.
If something happens at noon on Friday, and we're all off, then someone has to come in.
Do we have to have an agreement? This is to the town administrator, do we have to have an agreement with them? So there's, that's the labor laws?
There may be some, yeah, because we don't have any bargaining units. We may have some obligation to give them notice, but that is about it.
So the, so the ten hours per day, doesn't it create a problem if they're working more than eight? So we just...
No, but we don't have daily overtime.
Okay.
Well, that's not an issue.
And then, if it, obviously, if it doesn't work, I'll, we'll come back off and go back right on to what we've been doing.
And this is just a summertime thing, and then when do you, what, go back to regular?
Yeah, because the problem arises after you get past a certain time, it's gonna be dark before we start, and it's gonna be dark well after, and at that point, you're not really gonna go out in the dark.
So how about if we try it for this period and see how it goes, and if we want to do it again next time? Are you okay with that? Just do it as a test? So really, you want the second one, then, right? Or at least two employees are working Monday through Friday? Okay. Any other questions for...
No, no questions.
All right. Moves to authorize the highway supervisor to change the work schedule such that each employee works a four, a four-day week, but at least two employees are working Monday through Friday, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Are those in favor?
All right. Thank you.
Chief Dronsfield, this department?
So in, working on the security camera system for the transfer station, back about a month or so ago, Steve gave me a call, they had some materials stolen, some stone, a good amount of stone stolen from behind the rear building, the maintenance building. So it got me thinking, you know, and I guess Peter and Warren had told him that this happens frequently, they just, nobody reports it, and so it got me thinking, maybe we should have some cameras there. And I think I talked to a couple of you about it. So we had Eastern Alarm, when they were out to install the cameras at the transfer station, take a look at the two buildings. They suggested five cameras altogether. There'd be two on the front building, where Steve's office is, that would get any traffic that came in either way, and then three on the back building, which would cover all the different piles of materials, the sand, the salt, the stone and whatnot. So it's, covers about fifty-five hundred and sixty-six dollars for the two DVRs, because it's two separate buildings and all the cameras installation and everything. That's just to give you the board a, you know, a jump-off point if you wanted to do it. That's what we'd be looking at. If it's something you wanted to go forward with, I could get two more quotes and go from there. I'm not sure exactly if there's money in a building maintenance fund, like there was for the transfer station board or not, but this was just to get the ball rolling, if it's something the board wanted to move forward with.
Could we, could we, what if we just had two gates? I mean, if we just closed off the in-and-out road around...
I don't...
Maybe not that. Steve, what about that?
So, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. The issue's gonna come is, no one can get salt and sand mix out on a Friday or a Saturday or a Sunday if it's like that, unless we make a separate pile that's covered. And then, if we do that, some people don't want salt and sand mix, some just want sand because they don't want to put salt on their lawn, so you have that issue. And they, because they come in twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so the only other solution I can see is if we make one of the dump, they can get the salt and sand mix when the dump's open. Or when we're there. I don't have a problem with a gate, it's just...
No, it's fine.
You just run into the, the salt and sand issue in the wintertime, and what they're gonna do with that.
Actually, I prefer the camera system, so I'm glad you brought that up. I think it helps with respective theft, but also any liability issues that might occur, since it is open-ended.
Property damage, you get some teenagers that just walk in through the woods and...
Exactly.
...damage a couple of windshields inside of the equipment.
And your concern was on the mind. We don't exactly maintain our yard as well as we maintain the roads, because we're roads first, that's second, when people come in, and we're still trying to clean the roads up. Some places in that yard are pretty icy, and if they do fall, or they say they fell and they really didn't.
Exactly.
So I'd like to move forward with this, get some other quotes.
Okay. Can I ask the chief a question? How does this work in the evening or at night? And is this a...
They have a red.
Okay, so if I'm a potential theft, and I'm gonna steal rocks, I'm gonna come at night, so you're still gonna be able to figure out who this...
Still gotta be able to give you plate number.
Okay.
Yeah. It'd be all the same system that we have here, and it was just installed at the transfer station. And actually, the transfer station's already come in handy, because they had somebody dump a good amount of pressure-treated lumber.
Really?
So we were able to get the vehicle and, and figure it out.
All right. Is there also, one, I'm just thinking in terms of, one of the things you usually think when you're doing these kind of stuff, is that these premises are monitored?
Yes.
Can we get a sign that says something like that, in full staff, someplace?
Absolutely, yeah.
Is that something you can get from these people, or is that something...
No, we get them right from New England barricade, right in Newmarket, they make them right up reflective, so if somebody comes at night, it pops. Could I just have a discussion with Toby about that? He needs to get some more signage down there. There's one when you first come in, but you need more than one to, people to say the day if you do.
Mr. Brown?
I'm good.
Can I just move forward? So can we ask the chief to get a couple more quotes? Julie, what do we need? Two?
Three.
Uh, two more?
Two more, yes, two more.
All right.
I'll take that.
And can you check into, so this would probably come out of town buildings?
The capital reserve fund?
Well, I don't know.
That's how we, that's how we pay for the transfer station.
Yeah, I've got a meeting tonight with the church. They want to go with security cameras, it's just the way it's going, you got proximity locks and security cameras and, yeah.
Can we ask Mr. Tappin? Did you get to see this, though?
Yes.
Are you okay as a trustee, and I know you can't speak for the other ones, but does this come out of the town building capital reserve fund?
Two points. The cameras at the transfer station, the trustees and trust funds were asked if that could come out of the transfer station capital reserve fund, and we said that yes, it could, because they were functioning to ensure the proper flow and handling of material at the transfer station. We said that for other buildings, that wouldn't be the case for other buildings as town buildings. And although we did not put that in writing, our, in our discussion at the time, it was that, security cameras, that other buildings would be town buildings.
Okay. So you're okay with this coming out of, it's about fifty-six hundred dollars?
Yes. I will point out to the board that if you look over the course of a year, there is a significant amount of money that comes out of reserve funds that was never in the CIP. And so, in calculating what gets put into the CIP, those other expenses are not part of the CIP committee's calculations.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing? Because this is, I don't know how to... So going along with the salt and sand mix is, there are people that come in and out of there that get salt and sand mix, that I don't, not a hundred percent sure live in the town of Lee. They don't have dump stickers, and they come in.
Do they have transfer stations?
They do not have them.
Do they not have any?
No.
That's a, actually a discussion we're gonna have to have at another time.
Well, it's important, because some people just don't go to the transfer station, because they might have private pickup or something.
Right.
Yeah.
So you can't stop them for a sec, but I understand the situation.
There's still an issue of dumpster stickers at the transfer station as well, that will, I'll come and talk, address that at another time.
Well, we call it a transfer station sticker, but in fact, we could call it a Lee resident sticker.
Well, they're, they're correct. If I had my trash picked up, I live in Lee, but I don't have a...
I understand, but it's still requiring to get a sticker, if they were resident of Lee, is all I'm saying. You can come by and get a Lee, a Lee resident sticker, and then you don't have any issues going into, to dump.
So I guess you have that same thing with the highway department, correct?
Correct.
Because if you have security coverage, you can say, oh, Joe Schmo lives in Newmarket, he's coming to get salt and sand, and then you can deal with it, and so...
Yeah, because on the lines of what Kerry's talking about, when the vehicle's exiting, you'll be able to see if there's a sticker on that lower left-hand corner of the, of the car, and it could be something as simple as every time somebody reaches the car in the pantry, there's your sticker.
That's true.
You know, and tell them it has to be displayed if you wanna utilize the town facilities, salt and, whatever, but we can come up with an answer to that.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm number six, Ken Rossi. I'm in the, so I'm in the...
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that although we still have a few months left in this fiscal year, I will be over, I'm assuming, on my legal line item due to another one, I can't name names, because this legal one case has been resolved and another case is just starting up, and I believe I don't have all the Donahue-Tucker and Chedala bills, and I only have seven, a little over seven thousand left in my line item, and I'm sure we will go over. And unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about legal. And I really don't think there's gonna be any room to absorb it in what we call the general fund legal operating budget. As a matter of fact, it may be possible that that budget is gonna go over. So we just wanted to let the board know, and that we're gonna have to be looking to identify other places where we can get the funds.
Can you tell us approximately how much you think you're gonna be over, whoever?
I don't think we have the DTC bills. We usually, they're usually a month or two behind for the most recent court case, and the new court case is just starting up. We haven't even been served yet, but we anticipate to be served any day now, and not when we haven't even started. That's being handled by the Mitchell Group, though, currently? Correct, that's being by Mitchell Group. So the one that's been ongoing, we still have bills through, I'm sure today's email.
I'm sorry, what's the significance of being handled by the Mitchell Group?
It's just a different, it's handling different issues for planning and something, yeah. Hand layers all over the place.
They're all over the place.
So, you know, we'll keep the board apprised.
Just making it so we're...
Yes. And it's, you know, if you look at what we spend in what I call general administration legal, that's, that's not a lot of money. It's the bigger, obviously, the bigger cases. Hopefully, this most, the one that's almost winding down... Yes. ...has been a significant drain these last few years. Hopefully, that one will be put to rest, and we'll be back to our usual issues here and there. Right.
So I guess I would ask both of you, I guess, I don't necessarily at every single meeting, but maybe every other meeting, just keep a surprise...
Sure.
...of how it's coming in, and if you get any handle in terms of what you think it's gonna be over, that'd be great, too. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, me!
Oh, me?
Me, I'm next.
Oh, me.
We talked about this a little bit before, and the superintendent's proposing a resolution between the town and the school, so they don't charge us and we don't charge them. So he forwarded it to us, we've seen it all, a whole fight. So I don't know if the board has any questions about it?
No questions.
Okay. So are we okay to sign it?
Yep, yes, we are.
All right, so I move to approve the resolution between the town of Lee and the Oyster Cooperative School District as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are those in favor?
All right.
You want to sign this? You have a copy of it, I assume? Okay, so we'll sign that, I can send it in. Julie Glover, town administrator?
Oh.
Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Seven B.
What's B?
Seven B. Discussion long-term plans for the PSC. I brought this up the last meeting. Asked you to think about, this is really for the TCVC in terms of planning, in terms of this particular building. So I don't know if you have any thoughts. My thought is, at some point, you're gonna have to need these spaces upstairs when the fire primary goes full-time at some point.
I think, I think absolutely right, because no doubts in my mind, that we have to have room for expansion in the public safety complex. That's gonna take place both in a fire and in the police department. I, I mean, I don't see, I don't see real, any, any reason to take over this space, saying, well, we're not gonna need it in the future. We are going to need it in the future, so you're gonna end up building another addition or doing something to, to solve the issue.
Well, in terms of space, wouldn't you move the meeting spaces out of here and let them use the spaces here?
Absolutely, absolutely, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, so I was, I thought you were saying some addition.
I would not have dedicated, I would not have dedicated my free space or a meeting space.
Okay. So at some point, we're gonna have to replicate these spaces or something like them in some other facility?
Absolutely.
So that the safety services can utilize this space for whatever they need?
Yeah.
Both rooms or whatever happens.
I think the only other issue that comes up out of that, honestly, is with the, is with the EOC space downstairs, with the warm space, et cetera, et cetera, that we, we offer in case of emergencies, so...
What's, what spaces, what spaces do the, when they have this as a shovel, they just use the room downstairs, right?
Right.
Do they use upstairs all?
No. When we have an event like that, the firefighters or my officers who are working long hours will come up here to sleep, but it's primarily, we put the cots out downstairs.
But they don't sleep in this room?
No, they'll sleep in the bunk room over here.
But we use, offer the showers.
Right, we offer the showers.
Which are up here?
Right here, male and female showers.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that, you know, we had looked at this several years ago, and I know that Randy had taken measurements of the current town facilities, square footage, and measured up here, and it was, I think it was almost identical, or maybe a little less, up here, and since then, we've taken over the kitchen that's, was up here to be a records room, and we have taken over one of the meeting rooms as a records room, because we've expanded so much, there's actually even less available square footage than a few years ago.
Oh, that's, well, that isn't the TCVC's focus, that's one of the things we're gonna present, but I think the more focus is, what should we be planning for in the future if this space is not being utilized for meetings?
Right.
So, yeah, we know that, there's, there's not enough space to move everybody over here, but in a pinch, the town needs to do what the town needs to do.
Right.
So, it's like in nineteen forty-five, the southeast school burned, so everybody moved out of the town hall, and that was the school for the next life, five, six years. So you need to do what you need to do, but this is more of, in the future, what are the safety services gonna be needing in this particular structure? So, and one of the things is that, I believe both of the chiefs have said, is they'd rather get people out of their building, their building, saves things in terms of dealing with fire trucks going back and forth, because we're having meetings here, and the fire departments have meetings downstairs, and the parking lot's like totally full.
Right, yeah. Thursday nights, it's, planning is tough to get some meeting space here.
So, anything else?
Well, actually, I'm in agreement with you, I think it should stay as a public safety complex, which is truly public safety.
So in terms of kind of looking for...
Looking for other space outside of this building in the future.
Mr. Brown, anything?
Yes, definitely.
You could take the...
Absolutely.
All right. Number eight, Julie Glover, town administrator?
So I believe it was at the last meeting, the board asked me to inquire of the Recreation Commission whether they would be interested in doing a survey, and I think you could see from the information that was in the agenda, they actually have, and I think it's an ongoing initiative of theirs. I don't know whether there's, if there's anything else you want to ask of the Rec Commission on this subject. My recommendation would be to just bring the chair and, and probably their program director in, and have a conversation about it. But they obviously have been trying to reach people and determine what...
Well, it's a long list.
It is a long list.
It's a long list, it's a very wide assortment, and I think it's, some of it, I know they are talking about, and it's just a matter of how many people do you think you can, you know, for each individual activity, what kind, what's it gonna cost to get into the activity, and how many people are gonna sign up for it, so...
Well, the other thing, which I'm kind of interested in, is the scheduling conflicts for 2018.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can move any of those particular things. I'm specifically looking at the second one, in terms of Model Rocket Day, which is very popular for us, but...
Very popular.
If you schedule it the same time as the Stratton Fair, which is kind of our fair in this decade, well, not really, Rochester is kind of, but you can tell what Rochester's doing.
Well, I think Model Rocket Day, the fishing derby, they all have very, very high turnouts, and...
So, yeah, I would be in agreement, let's see if those two individuals can maybe come to the next meeting.
Yeah. I don't know how many people would sign up for Bocchibol, you know, but I know that you have to put... But I know that you have to put a Bajibol coordinate again.
Well, I, I let Recreation Commission know that I appreciate that the survey they have done, I think is sufficient. What I was looking for is laid out here within this particular survey.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, some comments that were made were, you know, you feel quite well for the younger generation, but we need to look more at the more senior generation as well. So the message is there, and that's what I was looking for.
And some of that is interesting because there's something in there about some activities for seniors, et cetera. And there used to be a lady giving Tai Chi instruction in the pavilion, but I haven't seen her there lately.
Cause some of the things that the library offers are more senior based, they have G M, yes they do. So that's really a rec department kind of thing, but they're doing that too.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, we have a lot for a lot of little kids, but I think for us older people, he was in a trouble. Mr. Steve Hall?
Yes. While we're talking about the pavilion at Little River Park...
Were we?
You alluded to it.
Okay. Is there any way we can make that no smoking? Cause it's getting, in the little time I've been down there picking up, it's getting kind of...
I think it is.
There's no signs that say no smoking.
Put signs on.
I think you need to put signs up.
But the policy says no smoking.
Sign up front. Does it say no smoking?
I don't think it does. Because there's cigarette butts in the kid sandbox, there's cigarette butts in the part of the pavilion, there's cigarette butts by the swings.
It's already supposed to be a no smoking.
It's in the policy book, but I think not everyone sees that.
I guess you should get some signs that say no smoking.
Okay, that's all I wanna know.
Uh-oh.
She jumped up real quick.
She just started smoking.
Signs, it's just like...
Can we put a no smoking sign at the swap shop? I went in there two Saturdays ago and it stunk like a cigarette, it was disgusting.
Absolutely.
Really?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, I'll get the president to make up, cause they're pretty good.
While you're there, I was talking about Little River Park. I was, I was at the park the other day, there was about fifteen mothers with babies there. Babies, I'm talking about toddlers anyway, some of them were playing in the sand. And as I was leaving, I noticed one of them running down towards the gate. We have a culvert there, plastic culvert, triangular opening, and a little child was getting ready to crawl inside the culvert. I was wondering if we couldn't put just a couple of bars or something
A screen?
in front of that.
Yeah, we can, we just bought one and did it at the James Farm Fire Pond, because the way that that was designed, it kept plugging with water and it would over top and then wash down the bagging. So you put this, the best way to describe it looks like a bullet, the tip of a bullet, and it's got...
Yeah.
Red bar grates in it, and it makes it so you can still take water and keep it some people here again. Yeah, we can, we can get one to put in it, but yeah, she doesn't, we can make one to put in it. No problem.
Thanks.
Yep.
So we're putting no smoking signs at the transfer station swap shop and no smoking signs at Little River Park?
Yes, we are.
Right.
And what's gonna happen if people smoke?
Well, I'm gonna send the police chief back. Okay, I'll get the scientist. You gotta get fingerprints of the butts?
DNA.
DNA. We're going dog quick.
Well, if anything, somebody's there, they see them smoking, just say, hey.
It's not like they've got a small room, there's just DNA.
Anything else?
We're good.
No.
On that subject, no?
Yeah, on that subject, moving on.
Chair Budby had asked me to look into a class action lawsuit against Visa and Mastercard relative to merchant fees. I contacted Interware, who handles our credit, and we don't, we don't get the interchange fees, so we would not be party to this lawsuit.
Okay, I'm fine. Anytime we can get free money.
Yep.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
We received a request from, from the Forest Society, which I forwarded on to department heads in the Conservation Commission. And no one is aware of any hazardous waste on the property.
Good.
And that's everything I have.
So you have the form so we can sign it?
Yes, yes. There's gonna be a lot to sign.
Yep. All set?
Yep.
I remember now, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Who's in favor, I say aye?
Aye.
All right, get your pens out, gentlemen.
How do you afford the last one? It started too late.
I didn't like it.
You didn't like it?
Yeah.
Too confusing?
If you started at this end, I'd like it more.
We could do that.
Give and give, bro.
We could do that, here.
Yeah. I'm gonna get caught in the crossfire.
Just one time.
Both seconds.
Coming both ways, I tell you.
How do you do that? Who are you using?
What do you have to sign on this one? Thank you. Oh, just a surprise.
Jack must have, I knew they tried to, I tell you, they must have gone, there's been no, no damage.
On the four, is it only me?
Yep. Maybe it's happened because that's why I don't like...
Excusing yourself. Do we need to have some like this?
Yeah. Um, that's easy. He's not...
Yeah, because it's...
He's not...
Oh, no.
Wow, we got official time of week then.
We're... Oh, these.
Yeah.
He's exercising his rights.
Who are you using?
I'm working for the...
Okay. Yeah, he's probably, he's gonna take it back to me. He'll tell me. He'll tell me.
They save these up. It's a lot of...
Something else is spearheading a, something with policy, probably to write some policy for child safety or something.
You took that first page out of the church one, right?
Right. We changed, yeah, probably changed, yeah.
Exactly. Person, if you want, in the door, leave it as a legal. Because you have to, they have to be open the door and they're gonna want you there. That's why they have a lot of...
I wanna be here for the children, because I know we have them. I think something else is spearheading a, something with policy, probably to write some policy for child safety or something.
You took that first page out of the church one, right?
Right. We changed, yeah, probably changed, yeah.
Exactly. Person, if you want, in the door, leave it as a legal. Because you have to, they have to be open the door and they're gonna want you there. That's why they have a lot of...
I wanna be here for the children, because I know we have them. I know we have them. Then you should have the current sticker.
He can't be going to residency and...
Then you shouldn't have, initially the temp records, I tell you. Anyway, it's a good decision.
Thank you.
Before we move into close session, could I bring up another subject that I'd like to discuss, only because Karen's still here and involves her a little bit.
Sure, what? Sorry, I wasn't paying any attention.
Really?
I don't matter. Oh, okay. I'm all ears. Tall people keep going before me.
That's a status symbol, move it up the bar.
Yeah, I'm on my level.
What is the homeowner doing across from Rubleins? They've got a foundation that's like a new garage.
Building garage.
Garage.
Yep.
So what I wanted to just have a short discussion about with the board is the master plan, which, this one was issued in 2016. And, and I really believe we need to be paying more attention to the master plan on an annual basis than, there's action items in here, there's goals and objectives in here, there's requirements to be updated by the planning board, it says from time to time. I would like that to be considered, at least annually, that there would be some kind of review of the master plan and updated, because, I mean, for example, some of the warm articles that we just passed affect, affect the goals and objectives of the master plan. Some of the things that you're working on as a TCPC, et cetera, et cetera, are discussed in the master plan. There's forecasts in here that really I think we should track, like the forecast for population after 2040, we should track the actuals over the past three years to see, you know, how far off are we, whatever. So, right now, I'm just saying, I would like us to take some kind of recurring action on the master plan, at least, at least once a year, possibly twice a year, to keep it, to keep it up to date and keep it fresh. The mayor should be a revision to this once a year after a review or whatever to say, you know, just update some of the data or whatever.
Sure, I can ask the, we can bring it to the planning board meeting in May and talk to it and see if we can send it out to the committees and commissions to give us an update from the 16 to where we are now.
Okay, this is not just for, for you, it's for us, I mean, too. There's things, every one of the committees has goals and action items in there that we don't require them to report on. It's been three years, we don't require them to report on their action items.
Right.
Same thing for all the departments, police, fire, et cetera. We have, we have action items in there and we don't address them. You know, I really think we need to pay more attention to managing the master plan.
The planning board was drafted the master plan, so what I can do is go back to the planning board meeting in May and ask the planning board to reach out to the departments who submitted information and have them give an update, if you, if that's something you'd like.
Yeah, we can make an addendum in the back.
Yeah. In the planning board's defense, they've just finished an application that was just shy of two years, that they met monthly on, plus other town business, so they've been extremely busy. Not that other boards and committees aren't, because they are, but...
Great, and, I mean, there's some great things in here for some of the committees to do, you know? It talks about reinstating historic trolley doors. Where are we on doing that, what's that gonna require? It just goes on and on. There's good stuff in here, but we're not managing.
One thing you did ask for is assessment of the last master plan.
And that has been...
Well, that's right, and that...
Have we seen it? I haven't seen it.
You have not seen it, so I sent it out to the planning, the planning board sent it out to the committees and commissions, and I got, I got everything back from everybody. The planning board has not reviewed that yet, like I said, they've been very busy.
So it's coming.
It's coming, yeah, it's coming, I have the information, but the planning board has, as John can speak, two years, two months shy, two years on one application, I met monthly, plus other town business.
Well, that's, you know, like I say, we have a new one, it's three years old now.
Two.
And we need to, we need to focus on this one.
Two.
Two.
Two. I'm sorry, yes, it's two years old.
Two years.
Going on three, and...
I'll give you that.
I'm, okay, thank you.
The other thing tied to that, which I was just talking about before, is tying that to the CIP.
To CIP, you're absolutely right.
Because the, the biggest assets we have are not in the CIP.
And, and, and these things, a lot of these things that are in here require funding.
Right. And, and to speak about the CIP, and John had a great point earlier about the CIP, the things that we've spent, but the CIP committee only knows what they're given.
That's correct.
So, we're only as, as good as what the, the CIP's only as good as the information. Now, I understand that we didn't know we were gonna need cameras at the transfer station, we didn't know we were gonna, but all of those things, and you said that there's things in there that it's missing, which is great, but the CIP committee needs to be aware of that. And we're talking about making some changes to the CIP committee this year. Chairman Bob Smith has expressed that he would like to turn it over to some new people, so we're working on that, but I need to meet with Bob and get some more.
Yep. Cause if we're gonna use it as a tool, because it's a planning tool and a spending tool, that's something that needs to be re-edited every single time. But, yeah, we need to put this building in there, at some point, we're gonna need a new public safety facility. You know, is that 20, 30, whatever it happens to be, but we should kind of have it at least on the list and be saving something for it.
Yeah.
The same thing with the other structures that we have.
Yeah.
You know, that's one of the problems we're having in terms of, at least from my point of view, with the town hall. We know we had to do something with the town at least twelve years. We should be saving, you know, a little bit, you know...
Paying the money we have to pay.
Well, there's, there's objectives in here for sidewalks, okay? It's, I mean, well, I'm just saying, they're in here, sidewalks. And if in the revision, we wanna take something out, we can take something out, but we need to manage the master.
We used to have a sidewalk, but it got taken away, so...
But as far as, I just wanna express, as far as taking stuff out of the master plan, the select board cannot change the master plan?
No, we can't, I understand.
Okay. All right.
I understand.
You scared me a little, sorry.
But it's, it's something to consider when it gets renewed again in seven years, is that something we wanna keep in there, sidewalks?
Absolutely.
The only thing we have sidewalks left is right in front of the town hall. Used to go all the way down past the church and down there, so...
So and how that, that got into play is, so each committee and commission gives input to the master plan, just like the CIP, and the master plan committee just puts in what's told to them.
Yep.
So...
Well, there needs to be some kind of, especially in the CIP, in terms of, if there's things in there that we've got in there that we as a group don't think we're gonna be spending money on, you know, we shouldn't be saving for it.
Absolutely.
The only thing we have sidewalks left is right in front of the town hall. It used to go all the way down past the church and down there, so.
So and how that, to that got into play is, so each committee and commission gives input to the master plan, just like the CIP, and the master plan committee just puts in what's told to them.
Yep.
So.
Well, there needs to be some kind of, especially in the CIP, in terms of, if there's things in there that we've got in there that we as a group don't think we're gonna be spending money on, you know, we shouldn't be saving for it. And the CIP puts those particular things in there. And there should probably be some things the other way that should be in there that aren't in there, that we're not saving for, so.
Right.
There is also some appendices to this which include a survey of town residents, which.
Yes, that's true.
Needs to be, needs to be looked at anyway when we make various decisions about work.
That's why this planning document is just not developed from the commissions and the departments. It's also from the decisions we're using of the town hall.
Right.
I'm done.
Good. Good. You're off the book.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Nope. All right. I move to enter non-public session, number 91, dash A, colon, three, two, A, and C. Do I have a second?
Agreed.
You seconded it?
I did.
Oh, you did. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lacor?
Yes.
Mr. Bugby, yes? So I move to seal the non-public session minutes. Do I have a second?
Agreed.
Any discussion?
No.
Aloud in favor?
Aye.
I remember 12. Can we direct the town administrator to notify the appropriate departments that we do not allow, well, allow regular work sessions for staff?
And that should cease immediately if it's occurring.
Okay. Mr. Brown, you okay? Yes? Do you have what you need, Madam Town Administrator? Anything else?
Good.
No dates from anything for the town?
Nope.
Oh, the, I don't know, are they up yet? The historical plaque sign?
They started.
I saw Bill today with them in the museum. I'm sorry.
Bill's putting up the signs for the historical register for the town hall.
How are the barn plaques?
We're working on it. We're sending out a notice to all the barn easement owners to see if they're acceptable. We've got a demo being worked up of what the sign will look like. So the, the sign is green, greenish, but it'll be for lead-designated historic structures. But it could be barns, it could be houses.
Good, great.
So we're working on that. The library, we provided, the historicals that I provided information to the library so they can put the front part of the structure on the register as well. We'll see how it scores, but, so that's moving forward. But when we have the official demo, because we wanna include the graphic with the letter to the owners so they can see what it looks like, but that's, that's working.
Great.
So, and the new banners are up?
Yes.
Thanks to Mr. Well, I'm sorry.
I didn't notice.
You did. Take a look. So the welcome one is new.
There we go.
But those are up. But Bill Stevens is putting up the start thing, so they should be up. So take a look. Denise is gonna do a picture for the equine when they're up.
Well, what's the status of, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the status of the sign?
Getting, yeah, I'm having just some trouble getting someone to give me a price.
Wasn't Barlow all over it?
They were, and then he disappeared. I don't know.
He disappeared.
Did he, did he like the, the parameters I gave him, or I don't know?
Did you check with the Cobrown? I lived their sign.
They did. Oh, yes.
That's the expensive one?
That's the very expensive one.
They have a very nice one.
They talked me into still going and approaching Barlow, thinking that they would be able to do something even if we have a smaller, much smaller budget. And so far, you know, I, I don't know what he, he's kind of not responding yet.
The one at the transfer stations that were fixed yet? I was in there last week, and Toby said it was broken, and you were working with the vendor to get. So it's working now?
It was just offline, and they needed to get, yeah. It's okay.
He said Denise is working on it, so.
It's been coming offline a little bit lately. I don't know if the dealers.
Anything else?
Good.
Good.
Question to your turn?
Second.
Aloud in favor? Aye.
Aye.